It is 7:02 November, December 10th, 2020. And I am going to call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. We are meeting on Zoom. We have a call to order. So we have Jens Bergen.
Here.
Susan.
Here.
Roger.
Yeah.
I'm Richgan on the chair. James Lowery was here.
Yeah, what happened to James?
Well, we'll see if he tries to get back in. Hopefully, he can. In the meantime, we're going to continue on. We have before us approval of the agenda, approval of minutes for October 8th and November 12th. Public comment, public hearings, we have six. The first public hearing is for an adoption of a proposed accessory sheds and setback requirements. Item two is the deletion of the Land Use Ordinance Section 9314-1 and 14-2, registration of existing contract yards. Item three is an amendment to the Land Use Ordinance, limiting required lot frontage in the shoreline zone to Brimstone Pond and Kennybunk River. Item four is adoption of Land Use Ordinance 8635, criteria for granting special exceptions in the shoreline protection zone. Item five, amendments to the Land Use Ordinance 8625, criteria for special exceptions in the shoreline overlay district. Number six is a statutory review of the growth permit caps currently set at 40, specified in the Arundel Residential Growth Ordinance. We then have three pending applications, Williams Auto Sale and Repair, Plenary Site Plan Review, Determination of Completeness, Cludier Mobile Home Subdivision Sketch Plan, and the Rundles Keepa Preliminary Subdivision Application Determination of Completeness. We will then be looking at two land use ordinances. One is a citizen's request to delete the thousand-foot setback required of a medical marijuana caregiver facility from a church and daycare facility. Item number two is a discussion with amendments to timber harvesting, including definitions and permits. And I will need a motion.
Make a motion. We accept the agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
It is unanimous. First item is the approval of the minutes for October 8th.
I I thought the minutes were in good order, other than it looked like there was a sentence fragment. At least on the version that I looked at. See if I can draw attention to it. October 22. Rich?
Yes, sir.
And the reference was for the October 8th minutes, correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, all right. I got organized here on my end. Yeah, it looked to me like there was a sentence fragment at the very end of the second page. It's down in item three.
Okay.
The last line.
Yep.
Looks like just a couple of words left out.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, can you correct that, Ted?
Yes, I can. It should say without sir and give more marginal lands. Development costs are much greater.
Yeah, that makes sense. I would approve it as amended.
Okay.
As amended.
Welcome, Tom.
Thank you.
With the record show that Tom again has joined us at 7:07. And Jamie is still struggling evidently.
Yeah, I sent him a message too. Yeah, I have a motion in the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we need a second on the motion to approve the October 8th minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the October 8th minutes as amended. Is there any other discussion on the minutes? Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
Tom?
I'll abstain because I came in later.
Okay. The motion is four in favor, one abstention. Motion passes. And now for the minutes of November 12th.
I think those minutes look in good order to me. I'd move to approve them as written.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Jens, seconded by Tom. Any discussion? Hearing none. Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Moving right along. Public comment. This is the time during the planning board that meeting that if the public has a comment on something that is not on the agenda, or that you would like us to look at at some future date, now is the time to say so. If anybody has anything, please just wave your hand in front of you. So yes, Richard up in the corner.
Hi, I'm Michelle LaFave, and this is my husband, Richard Grodsky. And this is regarding what's on the agenda this evening, I believe, a Rundles Keep LLC.
Okay, you will have to wait until we get to that section.
Okay, that's great.
But thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Hearing nothing, we will move on to the public hearings. The first public hearing is the adoption of the proposed accessory sheds and setback requirements in the R2, R3, and R4 district. This came about, we were asked to reduce the setbacks. We looked at it and we did so. We reduced the setbacks in the R4 from the back. They were at 50 feet on the back and 30 feet on the side. We reduced it to 25 feet for both side and back. And on the in the R3, we reduced it from 25 feet to 20 feet. And I believe that was yeah, we didn't do anything to the R2, did we? Yeah, we did. And the R2 was originally set at 25 feet for both the rear yard and the side setback, and we reduced it to 15 feet. We had been asked to do that. As I said, by, we had an application asking us to take care of that. We looked at it and we thought, okay, it makes sense. And it would allow somebody to put an accessory shed in that location. An accessory shed is a wooden structure with a footprint of no greater than 120 square feet and a roof peak of no greater than 15 feet, used for accessory storage purposes and not for human habitation. Welcome back, Jamie. You are muted.
Also looks frozen.
Either that or really unhappy.
Yeah. There is movement there. He just doesn't seem to be a happy camper.
Oh, no.
Oh, it's buffering, I think, because he Okay, does anybody have any comment on the accessory structure, accessory sheds change? Hearing none and seeing none, I will close that public hearing.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
You did receive a written comments from Emily Ingerson regarding the sheds. And I was wondering if you should, I see she's on here, but she's apparently not jumping in. There's, there's some comments, written comments that should be read into the record.
Okay, all I have to do is find my tablet because that's where I had them.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like they're mostly questions.
They're questions more than anything else. I have them. Would you like me to read them in, Mr. Chairman?
No, I have it right here. And this was from Emily, Emily, from Emily. Rob and I are unsure if we'll be able to make the public comment and hearing portion of tonight's planning board meeting, given our children's schedule, but we have some concerns we would like to share. The adoption of proposed accessory sheds and setback requirements in the R2, R3, and R4 district. Where did this idea come from? Have there been issues with sheds in the town? The issue came up because somebody, a citizen in the town, did ask us if we would, we could do something about that. They they were in the R4 district with a 50-foot setback and they wanted the shed to be further back, so they asked if they could put it into the setback zone, which was not allowed. This would allow it. Have there been issues? I don't think so. I don't think there've been a lot of issues, but it's one of those things that you don't know. Sad to say, a lot of people will just do it. And then we find out afterward that it had, it had happened. Why are sheds being referred to as wooden structures? Because I think, I don't know. When I think of a shed, I think of a wooden structure. I would have to defer to Mr. Redway as to why it was defined as a wooden structure.
Because the board at that point, realizing that we're actually, this is, this is a reduction. This is allowing a structure to go within much closer to a property line than it would be allowed to normally. And it's a small, it's a very small unit. It's meant to be somewhat attractive and and not imposing on a property owner. In some cases, you know, like in the R2 district, I think it's 15 feet from the property line. So the object was to keep it small, keep it, keep it fairly good-looking and not obtrusive. And so that's why the board decided to keep it wood, played with composite, played with a whole different other group of materials and said, let's just keep it wood and make it simple. You know, if somebody doesn't want to do wood, they can comply with the setback. So this is actually, this is, this is, allows people to do more than they currently can with sheds. The second question dealt with human habitation. If anybody's staying or living in it, then you have to meet building code, and then we're talking about a whole different animal than a shed. I taught, if you recall, the CEO and the building inspector said that then you're gonna have to meet, move back standards, got to insulate it, and a whole bunch of other things that would no longer make it a shed, but make it a structure that is regulated by the state of Maine Building Code. So that seemed like something that, number one, he didn't want to get involved in. Number two, certainly defeating the purpose of a storage shed on the, on the property line. So consequently, that's why the statement about human habitation. Yes, if you wanna, if you wanna, if you wanna have a she shed, or if you wanna have something which you're teaching your kids in, that's terrific, but that if you wanna be in it and meet those kind of standards that the state has for building code, then you need to, then you can build a shed for your kids, you know, or a she shed or something like that, but it has to meet the normal setbacks it does for any other structure. Again, this is a very small structure. 12 by 10, Rick will probably appreciate that because it's pretty much very similar to the sheds that are on the over at the cottages. Intended to be able to put a kayak in or to put other, other things in. How will it be regulated or forced to building? The building inspector will, will still issue a building permit for it. Will it be required? Will the building permits be required? Well, if you're building it, yes, you will need to get a building permit.
Ted, can I, this is Emily, I'm
Hey, there she is.
I got
You're gonna jump in and just make me struggle here, Emily.
Sorry, I was dealing with bedtime, but I caught most of that, I think. My question about permitting and stuff is, it's, it's my understanding that currently a building that is not a temporary structure, like a shed that is not on a permanent footing is not something you're required to pull a permit for.
Because he says there's no such thing as a temporary structure. To be honest with you.
Who said that? Sorry, I missed that part. Well, what is the, what is the zoning ordinance say or the code say? Because that, that's that seems like that's confusing to me, just given history, I guess.
Well, I think, I think the thing is, this is, this is something you might want to talk to the code enforcement officer about, because this goes into his territory when it comes to placement of the building there. That is small enough and it's an incidental thing, so it comes under his jurisdiction. The planning board will not be involved in this at all.
Okay, I contacted Jim.
Okay.
And then the other question of survey site plans, pre-prescribed envelopes be required? No, not that I know of.
Well, it's no different than pulling any building permit. We have to show that, you have to demonstrate that you're going to meet the setback. So if you have to meet the zoning setback, you have to get a, get a permit. That's why I was mentioning the permit. You have to show them that you're within that, that shortened or that's, that reduced building setback that's required on the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, that was part of my confusion too, because I didn't think you needed permits for sheds, and I also didn't think they were subject to setbacks for, for a temporary structure where you're not, again, pouring a footing or, you know, installing pre-formed footings.
But most, most sheds really aren't temporary. They are, they have a tendency to get put in place and to stay there, and they become permanent in nature. Yes, they're not on a foundation.
I'm just using the terminology that I thought was in place in the zoning ordinance, that's all. Because I, you know, because I think the reason they were considered temporary structures at one time or another was because they're not on a foundation, basically. And they can be moved very easily if somebody, you know, had a problem with it or whatever the reason may be, they're easily moved.
Right, but a structure in our definition basically require any structure per se as it's defined needs to comply with setback requirements.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. That is the first item in a public hearing. Are there any other questions or comments? Ricky, you're muted.
He's still muted.
Can you hear you, Rich?
There you go, Rick.
Can you hear me?
Yes, and now.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, Marty.
Just, I just I don't have, I wasn't here to talk about this particular item, but I'll just, I just listening in, this, the definition of structure. Anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires a fixed location on or in the ground or an attachment to something having a fixed location on or in the ground, including buildings, et cetera, et cetera. And then the definition of a building is any structure having a roof supported by columns or walls for the shelter of persons, animals, or personal property. Property. I just throw that out there for consideration. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record show that Marty Kane has joined us at 7:22 PM. Okay, any other comments on item one, accessory structures? We'll close the public hearing. Moving on to the next item, the deletion of Land Use Ordinance Section 9314.1 and 14.2, the registration of existing contractor yards. If you recall, we, once contractor yards became part of the Land Use Ordinance, we had required existing contractor yards to register with, with Town Hall, with the code's enforcement officer, so that we knew that they were out there. The term went by, it expired, somebody came along and said, I'm a contractor, I should be allowed to register. We left it open until, was it last year, Ted, or was it earlier this year?
Last year.
It was last year. They opened it last year and we ended it on a year and a half or a year, what, year and two months, so 14 months later, which would be August 1st.
Okay, so we, that period of time came to, came to an end on August 1st. We, they are now no longer to, able to claim I had a contractor yard that was up and running and in existence at the time. If they did not come and register it, they would have to apply for a full permit. It's been sunsetted. We simply wanted to remove that from the land use ordinance. It's taking up space that doesn't need to be there. And that was the purpose for that. Is there any discussion by anyone related to item number two?
Yeah, Rich, are there gonna be still any guidelines?
The contractor yards are still going to exist and they have all the guidelines in them. We're just getting rid of the early registration process. Item number three, I'll close that one. It's 7:25. I can't tell if Rick Light is trying to say something.
Looks like he is.
He may be muted.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, there he is.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, we can.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm, I'm using my phone, so I'm getting an echo on my end. It's, it's kinda weird. But I had submitted an email comments and in reference to and Bentley's property on Post Road, 245 Post Road, Post Road. And I'm here in reference to that property specifically. But in general, the comments we had were one, trying to clarify why the registration was being eliminated, which you just explained. So if we understand it correctly, anyone who is a contractor yard who wants to be licensed would have to come before the board under a conditional use permit?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And so if someone operates now a contractor yard that's grandfathered or I should say legally non-conforming because they predated the ordinance, are they required to still register or to get a permit?
That was the, the purpose of the original extension, where, where we asked people that were operating to come in and register so that we knew that they were out there. If they did not register, they have become non-conforming, not legally non-conforming. They're not conforming to the land use ordinance and they can be cited.
So, and I'm just, I'm representing Bentley Warren tonight. In his particular case, the board took no action because it was determined that what, what he was thinking was a contractor yard was, was never registered as a business and therefore was residential and could continue on as it was.
He, he did not fit the definition of a contractor yard. He's not storing and selling material. He is storing material for use in the campground.
Okay.
If he wishes to pick up selling material, he will have to come in and register as a contractor yard too.
Through a conditional use permit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The second comment I had was to respectfully request that the board consider contractor yards one and two under 9314 be permitted within the R2 district as a condition of use, not just, just the R4 or other districts as noted. And it seems to me, I would gather, I don't know for certain, but there were probably a number of small contractor yards in the R2 that would then be non-conforming and there are operating businesses paying taxes. And the R2 and R4 are both large lot districts. And it would seem to me that it would make sense to include R2 subject to meeting the performance standards, which are very specific of the contractor yard 9.3.14. So we'd like to have the board consider that in the, in the amendment to the ordinance.
Well, we can, we can put that on the agenda for discussion at some point in the future. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments on the sunsetting of, of the contractor yard two and contractor yard one registration times? Hearing none at 7:29, I will close the public hearing. Going to item number three, which is an amendment to Land Use Ordinance Section 8614, 8624, and 8634, limiting the requirement for lot frontages in the shoreline zone to Brimstone Pond and Kennybunk River. You guys may not remember it. I'm sure the planning board does. We attempted to reduce the size of, of lots for commercial purposes in those zones. Got it through town meeting and the state came along and went, I don't think so. We're not gonna let you do that. Put it back the way it was. Did I pretty much paraphrase that correctly, Ted? So that, that is the reason for this amendment. We're returning it to what it looked like before the change had been made. We sent it to them. We asked them. We never heard back. We went to town meeting and the next thing we knew, they were going, no, you can't do that. Yes, Ted?
Through the chair, um, that's pretty correct. It's not completely correct. What had happened was they had approved our changing the shore frontage requirement in various districts, because what had happened is that the shore frontage requirement as it currently is in chapter 1,000, that the state is the state model ordinance contemplates people dividing lots up on waterfront property. And therefore, it requires a minimum shore front, frontage on ponds, great ponds, rivers, oceans, lakes. And the one thing that they never did contemplate was that when you're on a wetland on a stream or some other shore, shoreline zoning entity that that requires you suddenly to put the same kind of shore frontage along a body of water that isn't necessarily a recreational resource that people are gonna fight over. And we aren't gonna get spaghetti lights lots that go down to forested wetland, for instance. And so consequently, they agreed that we could take that off and Brimstone is a great pond. Kennybunk River is a Kennebunk River is a is a river as defined. And that means that they said that had to stay. We had reduced the shore frontage for commercial uses down to two hundred feet because. Our inventory of. Commercial properties of those two resources show there were no properties in which you could subdivide. And and get a three hundred foot frontage on anyways, but the state said that. That we would not be able to reduce that particular standard because that was. A standing standard in chapter one, one thousand and a reduction of that was a violation or basically was not in conformance with the state. Standard. So we had to return that back to three hundred. So the first part being able to eliminate the requirement to have shore minimum shore frontage on wetlands. And small streams, they allowed us to do, but in terms of. A commercial that was for residential, but for commercial institution, we have to maintain that three hundred foot set setback for three hundred foot frontage. For Brimstone and Kennebunk River. So that's 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 why we couldn't go with the last June.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, the state has approved this. Prior to.
Of course they have. But it. Does anybody have any questions or comments? About that change?
I think it'll be nice to simplify it. And leave it to Brimstone Pond and the Kennybunk River.
Mr. Neto?
Yeah, hi, guys. Mike Neto Limercurd. I guess, and I might have missed Tad's explanation. Why is it specifically being kept in place in regards to Brimstone Pond and the Kennybunk River?
The state told us to.
Yeah, you have to do it on rivers to find is twenty five square foot. Square foot, twenty five square mile watersheds, which the Kennebunk River does have. And also because Brimstone Pond is the only great pond or a pond of ten acres or more that we have in the town. So you cannot. You have to maintain those frontages on those two types of bodies of water. So that's why those two are singled out. Those are the only resources that we have that would qualify.
Okay, okay, that yeah, that was that was my main question. And I guess. One, just one kind of anecdotal thought I have in regards to that that frontage issue is. Would it be logical to guess that? The frontage was in an effort to reduce density along the resources such as wetlands and everything, and therefore potential environmental impacts?
I think it was more that that there was. The kinds of resources that that we would be fronting were not. Resources in which people were going to be setting up camps and boat launches and the usual kind of. The kind of things that that the state is trying to achieve. They're trying to achieve. Less density along certain kinds of resources being lakes, rivers, large water bodies. That's. That's why they had that standard. When it comes to a wetland. It's not a priority for them and it causes problems for us because when especially if we're trying to do cluster zoning and part of the lot hits a hits a. One of those resources, then that suddenly our cluster zoning goes out the window because we have to have a minimum of two hundred foot. Frontage on that, which means we're going to have a minimum of one acre, probably. A lot if we've got a situation where we can have a smaller lot, we wouldn't be able to do that. So.
Okay, okay, I guess just for the record, I just I worry about the impacts of an increased density along wetlands and feeder streams. If you were to reduce that that frontage. Requirement, especially given the fact that, you know, a few planning board meetings there, there was, you know, a big meeting about all those tributaries of the K Monk River. Being pretty severely polluted and impacting the water quality of the Kennybunk River. But I guess I can also see the counter argument about cluster subdivisions, et cetera, et cetera.
I think you'll find, Mike, that as we proceed with mitigation process in the Kennebunk River study. We're going to be doing probably larger setbacks in some cases. Some more dramatic kinds of mitigations that we're going to need to do in order to improve water quality in that in that.
Okay, great, great. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
They can back, but right now this isn't really a solution for what we're looking for in that in protecting that watershed. This is this is the real one that we can work with.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, cool. Good to know. Thank you.
Any other comments on? That particular. Item, item number three. Hearing none, we will move on to item number four. The adoption of land use ordinance eight, six, three, five criteria for granting special exceptions. In the in the stream protection district. Special exceptions. In this case, relate to the setback from the resource in the stream protection district. Currently, it is seventy five feet. And. You can get an extraordinary circumstance whereby the applicant maybe may want to get. A building, for example, within that area. And provided all of the following standards are met. We would give consideration to the exception. The special exception shall not be granted as a remedy for a violation of the shoreline zoning setback requirements. The affected parcel is not within the upper Thatcher Brook, Richardson Brook, Goff Millbrook or Duck Brook watersheds. The affected parcel may be a lot of record prior to June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen must be. A lot of record prior to June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen and has no alternative site for a single family dwelling unit. On the property outside of the stream protection district. The setback shall be no less than fifty feet from the upland edge of the resource and associated wetlands. The encroachment into the stream protection district is permitted only for a single family residential unit. And not accessory structures, walls, decks, permanent boardwalks, paved trails, paths, non-native vegetation, or similar landscape elements. The applicant compensates for the loss of existing overstory and understory vegetation from the encroachment. On the opposite side of the water course or along the stream corridor. The gradient of the bordering upland in the impact area is a natural reverse gradient. Somebody say something?
You can mute right now. I think it's Rick.
I think so. That was him. The applicant compensates for the loss of existing overstory and understory vegetation from the encroachment on the opposite side of the water course. Or along the stream corridor, the gradient of the bordering upland in the impact area is a natural reverse gradient away from the stream and associated wetlands. And there are no slopes exceeding twenty percent in the impacted area of the stream protection district. And if you're confused. You should have been with us when we tried to figure all of that out. Does anybody have any comments or questions about it? Hearing none at seven forty, I will close that public hearing. And we will move on to public hearing number five amendments for the land use ordinance eight, six, two, five. Criteria for granting special exceptions in the shoreline overlay district. Basically, there were no exceptions in the stream protection district. We did have some in the shoreline overlay district. The primary, the two changes that we have made to that are that special exceptions. Shall not be granted as a remedy for a violation of a shoreline zoning setback requirement. So basically, if you build your house. And you violate the setback requirements and you are in the shoreline overlay or you are in the stream protection district, you will move your house. We will not grant you the permit. To make you to make that house legal. The second one is a setback reductions and not eligible Brimstone Brook, Goff Millbrook, Richardson Brook, Upper Thatcher Brook and Duck Brook. Any questions? Hearing none, we will move on to.
I have I have one, Rich.
Yes, Mike.
Sorry. So I. My the Davis farm, my house, nine hundred square feet. I'd like to do an addition on it someday. I am. Right on the border of the former Davis Pond, AKA a wetland associated with Duck Brook. So what exactly would be my process? You know, nine hundred square feet. I love my house, but I'll go insane eventually in this house. I'd love to do a, let's say, two thousand square foot addition someday. What would be the process for me to? Add on to my house, given the fact it's probably within that fifty foot setback from Duck Brook and the associated wetland?
If it's within. That setback and there is no other place that it can go. It has to be a single family residence and that has to be the only place that you could put it since I would say. And and I'm sure the town planner can correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be my position that since you already have a house. There is no special exception that you would qualify for.
So I could add on to my house, providing there is, you know, providing I don't want to move my house necessarily. Like, obviously, I want to add on to my existing house.
You could not add on. You could not add on and have it go into the protected wetland district.
Okay.
As long as you're outside. As long as you're outside the seventy five feet, it's not a problem.
But what if I'm what if the existing house is within the seventy five feet? Already?
That's exempted. That's what what was referred to earlier as being grandfathered. So okay, but you wouldn't be able to extend further in.
Okay, okay, I wouldn't be able to extend further in. I would say so I would have to go in the opposite direction of I could. I don't think my existing house. But go in the opposite direction of the setback.
Correct.
Or go up.
Or or go up. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, okay, okay, got it. Got it. Okay, sounds good. That's 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 reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, at seven forty four, item number six. Statutory review of the growth permit caps, which is set at forty right now, as specified in the Arundel. Residential growth ordinance, we are required to look at this every three years, I believe.
Right.
And we're already late this year. So we're looking at it. The the entire extent of this review. Is that we have to publish the fact that we're going to review it. So we had to have a public hearing. Notifying everybody that we will be looking at the residential growth cap. And if anybody has any questions about it or comments on it, it is set at forty right now. And essentially that means that you there are a grand total of forty houses that can be built in the town of Arundel in any one year. This is the first year in. Many years that we've gotten up to the forty level. We will actually hit that that maximum amount. Most of the time we've been down around thirty or less. But we need to look at it. Anybody have any comments on that?
This is Emily Ingraham. I am just curious. When you look at that, are you also going to be looking at the process by which permits are granted? Because there are some significant issues with that process. In terms of the way permits. Or points are assigned to issue permits. And in terms of the way permits are allocated.
Ted, is that something we look at or is that something that codes enforcement does?
Well, I think it's a two step process. The first thing we've got to do is we've got to determine whether or not we maintain the forty permits. Building cap. Or if we reduce, I mean, actually, the data shows that we were justified to reduce it based on the three year average. But that's that's the first thing the playing board could do. The second thing would be the question of whether or not. The next question that's not statutory, but is is policy based is the question. Is this ordinance, the way it's written, it's a nineteen seventy nine ordinance. It's gone through a number of different evolutions. But is this ordinance and its point system. Fair, equitable, and within the limits of the law. And two. Is it in what I would say, is it conforming to the growth objectives of this town? I think I have made a secret of it. If the town's comprehensive plan pushes more multi-family. Fifty five and older. More PUD kinds of development, this growth ordinance is basically. A stake through the heart of that effort. Because the natural way that people develop that developers will develop a project of that nature is they will do. Units or sections of a project at once, and it will be more than the four or five building permits you can get per year as an individual. So it's it's an impediment to that objective land use subjective. It's also a there are some questions of whether or not, in my mind, whether or not the the point system is defensible. And I think the planning board has got to take the lead on that.
Right, we're we have discussed, well, I shouldn't say we've discussed, there has been discussion. About whether or not we would look at fifty five and over housing. Or multifamily developments in terms of saying that. They would fall outside of the growth ordinance and not be subject to to the way they get permits right now, which is. What, six to a month, six a year?
Yeah, you. I'm not sure about how Jim's granting them right now. I don't really get into involved in that part, but there is a limitation on the granting of permits to any one individual or corporation. There's a limit to it and it's not certainly enough for anybody who's doing any kind of multi-family development.
Right, so we're going to have to take a look at that aspect of it.
Three years, you know, it's just.
At the same time that we look at the number of permits. And there will be a lot of discussion held on that, I'm sure, before we get it finalized.
Right, but and Emily's bringing up some very coaching points. I think the the issue here is the first statutory requirement the planning board has. Is to make a decision on the cap because that we have to do every three years. And that can be something the planning board does immediately after this, or they can defer until the next next until the January fifth meeting. But that is the first thing we have to do. Is meet that.
Any other comments, questions?
I just want to add to Tad's point, just a couple of. Points for the planning board to consider as they move forward with the the growth. Growth ordinance performance. I'd just like to flag that there's currently no recognition of approved subdivisions in. In the cap, so it can, you know, I'm a developer and it could actually give developers like us. An advantage, knowing that the cap has been met in twenty twenty. You know, in theory, developers could quickly chew up a significant chunk of the available permits for any given year in the beginning of the year. And that would leave little left for homeowners, particularly in this climate. And then in addition. It makes sales and planning very difficult for developers like us. Because when you're selling homes for a contracted price on a set timeline. There isn't readily available public information on how many permits have been issued to date. So if you sign a contract in, you know, September and you go to pull a permit in November and are told. There are none left that can that can really impact your business and the contract that you've signed. And I also think there is no recognition of the seasonality of Maine's climate and building season. I think you should consider maybe some flexibility built into it to allow people to proceed with projects. When weather cooperates, I know the situation that we were in this year in November, there were. Nine applicants, I believe, and only seven of them received permits. So two people have to wait until January to pour a foundation. Which is. It just doesn't seem practical in Maine and it doesn't seem to actually affect, you know, the end goal of the cap. Which is to limit growth, you know, those houses are going to be built. They're going to be built two months later. And that's not really going to be a significant. And that's not really going to be a significant change to the town of Arundel's growth. But it is going to be a significant impact on that project and those folks who are building that project. Um, in terms of cost, in terms of, you know, just logistics. So I think all of that should be taken into consideration with, with further conversations about this.
Thank you very much. Any other comments by anyone? Hearing none, I will close that public hearing at seven fifty-two, and we will move right on to pending applications. First item, Williams Auto Sales and Repair Plenary Site Plan Review Application Determination of Completeness. Proposed auto sales and repair facility consisting of a twenty-four hundred square foot building and twenty-seven space parking lot on eight tenths of an acre lot containing a single family home at six, six, zero Alfred Road, tax map for Lot Nineteen in the Alfred Road Business District. Lester Williams is the owner applicant and Peter Beagle of Land Design Solutions is the applicant's agent. And I see Mr. Beagle is here. We did a site walk on this property two weeks ago?
November fourteenth.
November fourteenth. Well, like three weeks ago. And Mr. Beagle has responded quite nicely and, and to informational requests and some, some change updates that we had mentioned to him at the meeting. I did notice that, um, you got a letter from the neighbor related to the fencing. Does the board have any questions? Okay. Anything that you guys saw at the site walk that was a concern that you did not tell the applicant about?
None at all.
No.
I know we pretty, we, we discussed it quite a bit, asking him, uh, I think most of the discussion revolved around the, the buffer between his house and the neighbors. And, and he has gotten a letter and they are happy with, with the resolution. I think the next step, and I'll ask the town planner to, to make sure, we need to determine this application complete and then move forward to scheduling a public hearing in January.
Rich?
Yes, sir.
Uh, did they get the idea with the deed, uh, straightened out?
Thank you.
Uh, we, we're, we are still working on that, although I think we've heard, uh, we've heard good news and had, uh, one of the parties sign off. So we're quite optimistic that, that, that still is not a problem and is, um, and our attorney is, uh, wo- working on that.
Could I, uh, could I chime in for a second?
Well, I don't know. Who is this?
This is Les.
Okay. All I see is your iPhone.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. It's like, oh, I, I had to log on and my wife wasn't helping me walk through this, so. I'm, uh, I'm, 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 uh, on my iPhone and I can't seem to get video, but, um, anyhow, we did. And I, I think I forgot to tell you, Peter, I apologize about that. Um, we did, uh, receive a call from Rick Hall, uh, last week that we did get the other signature that was needed so we could finish the probate. So, um, from my understanding from Rick, that it should be pretty quickly now to get the probate hearing reopened because we already have an active, uh, case, and he's quite confident that we should have it resolved, hopefully even before, um, the public hearing.
No, I think that, that will be great. It, uh, we've done it in the past where, where we have granted the permit subject to certain conditions, and in this case it would be subject to getting the deed cleaned up. But I don't, other than that, I don't have any other issues. I don't know if anyone on the planning board does.
Oh. The only thing I can think of is, is the DOT permit for a curb cut or anything is, is.
We, yeah, we actually, we have those and we have passed on the curb cut, DOT curb cut, um, agreement and a, the drainage agreement. Both to the town. So those should be in the town, uh, file. Uh, we haven't signed those yet. We're waiting till once, if, if, and when the project is approved, we would sign those and they would be executed. But DOT has signed off on both of those and we have those in hand, just waiting our signatures.
Hey.
Anything from you, Jamie?
Nope.
Roger?
No, I think we should deem the application complete and plan on a public hearing.
Second.
Agreed.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, Roger made the motion. Who seconded that?
Second, Susan.
Nope, Tom beat you to it, Susan.
Okey-dokey.
Okay, so Ro- Roger made a motion, Tom seconded, we deem the application complete and schedule a public hearing. Uh, it would be on January fifth, which is our next meeting.
Which is a Tuesday, by the way.
Which is a Tuesday. Start, starting, uh, January fifth, we, we will be meeting on the first and third Tuesday of each month.
Um, there, there's actually one other item I, I should bring up.
Okay.
That, that is the, uh, the cost estimate. So initially, we asked for a waiver of the detailed cost estimate, and when, um, uh, staff explained to us what that was needed for, we, uh, emailed a cost estimate, um, in. So we, we have submitted that, um, and I don't know if that has made it into your packets. Um, I can submit that as a separate item, um, to Tad in the next number of days, but we have, uh, we have, uh, put that forward. So we no longer, uh, we're not requesting a waiver for that, so that should be crossed off the, um, requested waiver list, and we will be, we've, we're in agreement that that needs to be done and we've, um, uh, put that forward.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we, they have that, Peter. So, uh, that's why you're, that's why they're deeming you complete, you've, you've completed requirements.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded to deem the application complete. Susan?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Jens?
Hi.
Roger?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
It is complete. We will hold a public hearing. I'm sorry, Marty. We gotta get your video fixed so that I can see you.
I don't know how to do that.
Well, we'll, we'll work on it. I'll, I'll try to come by someday and see if we can't get, see what the problem is.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. We will see you on Tuesday, uh, January fifth.
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
The next item is Cludier Mobile Home Park Subdivision Sketch Plan. Proposed development of an age-restricted mobile home park consisting of twenty-five double-wide mobile home sites on an acre parcel located at one twenty-six Campground Road, tax map twenty-nine lots two, three, and four in the Mobile Home Overlay District and the R-one District. Deborah and Norman Cludier are the owner applicants, and Jeff Allen, P.E. of A.E. Hodgson Engineers is the applicant's agent. And I see that there's the Cludiers. I thought I saw Mr. Al. There he is.
Head for the, now.
He's up in the middle.
But it, that, oh, it's a trifecta.
And this is, this is simply a report on the site walk that was done. I don't believe we have uh, any kind of formal plan in front of us. Am I correct, Mr. Planner?
We don't have a, we don't have a formalized plan. You have a sketch plan, uh, which the applicant was asking for, for comments and reactions from the planning board. And, uh, you were going to comment or make such reactions, um, post, post-site walk, so. It's post-site walk.
Comments from the board?
Well, I'll, I'll say it's all clean and, um, dry, so it is, there's no wetlands issues, which is good. Um, so he's got a, a clean slate. The woods, the, the wetlands way in the back, but, um, Norm, you're gonna, Deb, you're gonna stay out, out of that area. So I think the rest is pretty, pretty straightforward.
There, there appears to be, uh, enough of a buffer in terms of the distance. It is, it is kind of thin when you look at it, particularly if you're standing behind Norm's house and you look off to the left toward the other property, you've got a road that runs up on the side. I, I found that buffer to be very thin. It does meet the setback requirement for, for it. It's just, there's not a lot of trees there.
You're talking about along the side of that, that road that goes?
Yes, yeah.
The back lot?
Mm-hmm.
Well, maybe we could, could add more trees along there.
I mean, that was, that, that was my whole thing, that, and, you know, uh, the, Jamie clued me in as to, because I was thinking to myself, I do not read maps very well. It's surprisingly enough, I was a Boy Scout long time ago for about eight months. This time I didn't want to do that. So I never got into the topography and learning how to read contours on, on the maps. But Jamie was kind enough to show me where the septic systems appear to be indicated, uh, and what the slope looked like. And honestly, even with, with, with the, the, the fact that that buffer probably, uh, didn't exist because it didn't look like the trees had been cut down. Uh, going into the buffer, it just looked like the buffer was thin. And, uh, other than that, I didn't have any, I didn't see anything there. I was kind of surprised that it had been completely clear-cut. But again, you maintain the buffers on the side, you just cleared everything that was in, in between. It would probably have been a little difficult to move a couple of double wides in there with a bunch of trees in the way. It makes me wonder how they got my house where it's at. Any, any comments by anybody else on the board? Anything from the town planner?
Touched on, you touched on the observation we had at the, uh, site walk about the one, um, the one septic field. And didn't know if there'd been any, any progress on test pits or things along those lines.
No, we, uh, this is Jeff Allen from Hudson. Now, we've not done any test pits yet, so the, the actual location of those, uh, septic fields are uh, still up in the air. We, we do need to get down and do some test pit, uh, and, uh, find out where we can locate those. So there's nothing magical about the location that we have them right now. Those are just so, shown as a, uh, sort of a conceptual idea that it was going to be a, um, a, a common shared, uh, leach field system. The, those can move where they need to.
Okay. And re- refresh my memory. I don't remember if it was going to be community water or was there going to be a separate well for each one of the units?
I, I believe it's going to be community water and community septic.
Okay.
Each unit will have their own septic system, but the septic tank effluent will go to a, a common leach field or, or several common leach fields.
Okay. Thank you. Anything from anyone else on the board?
Uh, just gonna say there may be three wells as, uh, as well, uh, as opposed to one. It could be one or, could be two or it could be three. But they would be common.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Tom?
I just see that as being the only big challenge is, is getting all the, uh, get enough water to supply all those, uh, dwellings and then also place in the, the, the leach field, the septic system. I think that, that's your big challenge. Other than that, I think it, it's, um, it's, it's a easy project to cite there.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Yeah, Marty.
I think if I remember from years ago, that's on its own aquifer of water, is it not, Norm?
Yeah, well, uh, we did investigate, I did talk to Kenny Bunk, Ken Bunk Port Wells Water District. Just to, to look into running public water there. And he gave me a price, it would probably be a hundred fifty dollars a foot, which would probably add up to three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that's not feasible to do that, but we do have a well that feeds crossroads across the street. It's a fifty gallon a minute well. And I did talk to Roger Tashrow to see if any other projects have drilled underneath the road to run water lines or any other thing. He says they have done that in the past, so I'm going to suggest that we tap onto the well across the street, which is fifty gallons a minute, to feed these, uh, twenty-five sites. And there's also a backup well that, uh, produces, uh, about twenty gallons a minute as a backup to it, so, um, that's, that's the way we're leaning right now.
And would that be enough to feed both projects on both sides of the road?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The state has guidelines.
The state has guidelines, is, you know, how much water per minute and that type of thing, so.
Yeah, matching up the pumps with the storage capacity, uh, fifty gallons a minute could easily handle that.
Okay.
Yeah. What about it on high demand, uh, periods? Do you have, is there like a, a holding tank, pressurized holding tank to, to those?
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Yeah, we probably have about twelve of them right now.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah.
I, I don't see any issue. I think we should deem the application complete.
We can't. We do not have an application.
Oh.
This is, this is just a discussion of the site walk and, and the sketch plan that we got.
Oh, well, I don't have any issues based, other than the ones discussed. Sorry about that, guys.
Okay.
I like the idea, though.
Well, you gotta do the application first. That's why we're, we, it was in this, uh,
Yeah.
This weird thing.
No. Is there anything, uh, from the town planner?
I have a question for the Cludiers. Um, what is the intent regarding your house? Is that going to always be a part of this project or are you going to want to separate that out for, uh, so it's a, it's a separate entity from the project?
No, it's gonna be included in the whole, whole thing, that run as an office and that type of thing. Yeah.
So at some point when it, when it is sold, it'll be sold as a unit.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Otherwise, the question would be, you might want to plan now for how you're going to separate those two and meet all those standards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Now the hard work begins.
Yeah, now the, now the fun stuff starts. Now you've got to put it all together and design it out. But that's why you have Mr. Allen and Mr. Hodgson.
That's right. Yeah. Oh, this is, uh, this is actually working out pretty good for those guys because they are from water, though. So, uh, they're saving a lot of time traveling to Arundel for these meetings, which, uh, it's, 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 you know, it's a good thing for all of us, really. Well, and I would comment that, uh, you've run a very good Zoom meeting, uh. I, I would serve on several boards, uh, state and, and local, and we, we've been Zooming now for six months and you're doing, your Zoom meetings are handled very well. It's just getting the mute buttons. Yeah. Correct.
Thank you very much.
This does. It's nice to hear. Actually lives in Bangor. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, we could, we could make Jeff drive down every week. We could have fun.
Yeah.
He, he would end up being an Arundel resident and then you could have two offices.
I think it might work.
Well, thank, thank you very much.
Uh, you're welcome.
Get us the plans as soon as you can and we can move forward from here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Take care. Merry Christmas to you too. The next item on the list is the Arundles Keep Preliminary Subdivision Application: A Determination of Completeness. A proposed cluster subdivision containing nine lots serviced in part by a five hundred and fifty-foot road called First Lightway, located on a fifty-eight point zero-three acre parcel, tax map nineteen, lot eight, located at one fifty. located at one fifty Irving Road in the Rural Conservation District and Resource Protection District. Arundles Keep LLC is the owner and applicant and Jason Baviani's PE of Atlantic Resource Consultants is the applicant's agent. And I see that Jason has joined us.
Hey, hey, guys, can you hear me all right?
We can.
I need to, I need to start off with a disclaimer on this. The application is not complete. There are a number of items from the original application that we have not received. And then we did get something from Jason today. Some kind, a, a, a change to the, to the plan. However, that late submission is not part of the discussion. Because we have a cutoff of fourteen days and we're not, we ran into trouble when we started to accept information that came in the day of. And, and you can remember back, we had some stuff, it was the night of at the meeting when stuff was handed to us for review.
Actually, Rich, can, can I talk for a minute though? So, so, but that, that plan was actually based on a discussion that Tad and I had yesterday, based on his notes for this meeting. And it relates to the sidewalk, which Tad wasn't there. Now he's, he's turned around, he's wandering off on me. There he is. Yeah. Yeah.
So it raises, it raised the issue that the planning board has not had time to review any of it.
Right.
So what I would like to do and the rest of the board may have a difference of opinion. I would like to, to put this off to the January fifth meeting so that we have, if you want us to look at that other plan, we will have the time to be able to review it over the next couple of weeks. And then if you want to go with that one or you want to go with the original one, we, we can do either one. But it's, it's not fair to the board and it's not fair to, to you. If, if we just reject it outright and we go, I haven't had time to look at it. So I would, I would just assume be able to put it off.
Well, I mean, if you do put it off, then that will give me time to, to, to rejig a couple of things in the application specific to that plan. I mean, I kind of wish we could talk about it, but I, I, I'll just say that it, it feels like the plan that was recently sent based on my, you know, design suret with Tad would seem to solve a lot of issues. But so I, I guess in some ways, there's some synchronicity to, to pushing it to the fifth, only because then I could get you more. We could probably be complete at that point. So, but I, I'll, I'll let the board discuss. What are the, what are the other items in the application that aren't there that would, would make it incomplete?
Hang on just for a second then I can answer those questions.
So it, it was in your staff notes from the last, from November?
I, I, I think the major one was the homeowners docs.
There was a list of five or six applications on the application. There were highlighted in red if, as, as not having been submitted. I just have to find out where they are.
Okay, so it was, it was more than, than just, you know.
It's more than just.
Those lines.
Uh, I, uh, actually I just kind of disagreed with some of those things. Yeah.
And there, there was also a letter from Roger Tashero questioning the culverts and the crossings and some other issues that he had. And I don't know if that's been addressed at all. He said, he says that there are no driveway culvert shown anywhere on the first light way, which is the plan that we have or the common driveway. And it shows a fifteen inch cross culvert, but the culvert should be eighteen minimum.
So, so, but to me, that, that type of stuff does not weigh into whether it's complete or not. Then, then to, you know, things that we will address during the preliminary subdivision review and potential approval.
Let's see if I can find.
Well, the only thing is that if it does require us to have, as complete, it does require to have the road construction stuff done basically. And the problem Roger was finding was that he didn't, it wasn't complete. All basically culvert sizes and number, whether or not it was adequate culvert was, was an issue for review. Yeah, that's not a complete issue, but he was talking about there are various culverts that weren't there. The fire, the fire chief also was talking about details on the, on the, the pad and the cistern, which I'm not sure is even going to be in this other, in, in the new plan that we're looking at. And I guess the, the question is that we had some issues which I had brought up and which the planning board had brought up and what the applicant has done is tried to address those with doing a redesign based on somewhat on, on what you folks talked about out of the field on that sidewalk, including an alternative design from, for doing a cluster that might take care of some of the issues that we've been concerned about. And so I think the applicant was hoping to get some initial feedback that he could, if, if you liked the, the concept, you could work on that in the next four weeks or three weeks it is until the, the January fifth meeting. So it would be a productive meeting at the January fifth instead of starting all over again.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Were you looking for the, the staff notes from that eleven four meeting?
No, this was, on the original application, there was a list of items that he is supposed to have submitted along with it. And we had that highlighted in red and I'm.
On the staff notes. That's.
Is it under the staff notes? Okay.
Yeah, I, I have that if that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was talking about. And I'm, I'm having the Dickens, Dickens of a time finding it right now.
Okay. I have, I have that if that's helpful.
Yes, if you could, if you could tell us what those items were, that would be wonderful.
There are, I would say a handful, looked like, like about eight in number. The first one of which was the submission requirement pertains to the location map looking to show resource protection zone boundaries.
I know I had seen it.
You got it?
I do. Thank you very much. Yeah, the, the map does not show the, the resource protection zone boundaries. The plan set references the boundary survey prepared in two thousand and four, but the actual survey is not submitted. The current and previous test pit locations are mapped on sheet C one hundred. However, test pit logs or HHE two hundred applications are not included. The addresses of the butters of the butters are not provided. There was no full sized copy of a high intensity soil survey. The location of trees, the extent of, extent of forest clearing for lawns and structures. Locations of all trees greater than twenty-four inches are not identified on the map set. Boundary landlines of land use protection of land use districts governing the subdivision. Boundary of the resource protection district includes the two hundred and fifty foot setback and should be amended on the plan set. The location of open space to be preserved. Covenant restrictions outlawing proposed ownership improvement and management of the common space are not provided. And the area of each lot where removal of forest cover will be permitted to be removed. Clearings on, on lots eight and nine have not been delineated. And then lastly, areas within or adjacent to a, to the project identified as high or moderate value wildlife habitat by IFNW. Those are the items on the application that we need to have. Those are required. And we don't have those. And, and we would need those regardless of which plan went through. So, which is why the application is incomplete. I believe Ted sent you that. Jason?
Oh, yeah, 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 we have, we have all that information. We were just trying to get the, the, the discussion on, I mean, all those items, as you're saying, Rich, they don't really make a whole lot of difference based on what could potentially be a different layout. So.
Right. And, and, and I can see where that would be a problem. I, I, that's why I think we should wait until the January fifth meeting. It gives you time to correct all of it because if we use this information, this application is grossly incomplete. And we can't look at the new application. We haven't had time to review it or study it. I'm not even sure that, that, I don't know how much time the town planner has been able to. I know he worked with you to develop this. But we have no staff notes from him or anything else to look at. Which is why I think we should put it off until the fifth of January. But I will, I will leave that up to the rest of the board. What do you think of that?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense because it gives them time to gather that information up.
Any thoughts, Tom?
Usually we're being pressured to move things along, but sounds like you just would work in your favor, Jason.
Well, I mean, it's really what makes you guys happy. So.
Oh, oh, there you go.
This would, this, this would make us a lot happier than having to say no. Although we, we have been known to say that on occasion.
Yeah.
Jamie and Doug.
I am curious what, what changes to the plan, if you could, could summarize them very quickly. Well, I mean, I can tie it to the sidewalk. So, I mean, so the discussion of the sidewalk. So, so, I mean, you can tell me to stop talking if, if it's, i- i- if it's straight far from, so you'll recall from the sidewalk, the purpose of the, the sidewalk was we laid out the two lots on the right, if you're coming in where the proposed road is. There, the previous staff comments had been, there were some concerns over that they're not being suitable, you know, lots for development. There just wasn't a whole lot of room there. And so we laid them out. I mean, I can meet all the state requirements for, for, you know, building a house there. You know, we typically, we see a lot of this more condensed development in, you know, what, what's been happening. That's the, that's the, the trend of, of development over the years. But you were the concerns that, you know, it's not the character of the neighborhood, you know, we, we got lots that they may be over an acre, but your, your actual building envelope is like fifteen, fourteen thousand square feet. So the, in the staff memo that Tad sent out related to the sidewalk, there were questions on maybe getting a little more creative and sort of, we, we kind of went the opposite way of what you normally do in a subdivision application. Normally you're trying to take the development which you're, you're supposed to, I believe you have to cluster in the zone. Bring the, bring the development together and put it all on one road off of a public road. So that you're not creating, you know, multiple driveways or, or you, you just have like what I call, you know, track housing along the front, along the frontage of a public road. However, this particular lot, based on its characteristics, it's got the shoreline zone wetland in the back. The soils get marginal as you get towards the wetlands and then up by the road, the soils are typically much better, a better draining class soils. So the idea was condense the lots up along the frontage and then not build a road, but you share driveways. And so I'll just generally discuss the plan and, and not show it to you. So, so basically what we did was we just carved up the frontage and then you share driveways between each two lots. So there's four shared driveways. And in the end, I mean, if you want to talk about environmental impacts and things like that, it actually creates a lot less impervious area. There's no new road. It's basically every three hundred and fifty feet, the sixteen foot gravel driveway that goes to two lots and then there's eight lots. So I mean, from a, if you sort of turn the ordinance on its head a little bit, it, it, it actually is a pretty elegant design. And it may be in this specific project, a smarter design, but we, we, under normal circumstances, I wouldn't start with this because it's, it, it kind of flies in the face of convention.
And I think, I think that's good because one of the things that we as a planning board are supposed to be looking at is the suitability, for lack of a better term, of, of, of the various housing aspects. And if this sounds like it might be a better fit to what is out there than what the first plan showed.
Oh, yeah.
I, I'd have to look at it, but.
Jason, I'm just curious. It doesn't have anything to do with what you just suggested, but do lenders have any objection to shared driveways? And is it harder to sell houses on shared driveways? Or do they, do these driveways converge or diverge from each other at all to make them somewhat independent or?
Yeah. So, so what we would do in this particular situation is there would probably still be a, under the, there would still be a homeowners association and under that, there would be a road maintenance agreement or driveway maintenance agreement. So the driveways, they, they do split off. So it's, it's, it's fifty feet of a shared access and then they make a U, you know, and then they, they go their separate ways. So in that sense, you could, you could actually write it right into the homeowners association that maintenance for all driveways is shared by all the lots. And, you know, and they, they plow the shared portions, push it straight through and then everyone else can plow their own driveway coming in. I, I've seen it done that way. It's, it's much more common, probably in more urban areas or, or even, you know, we do work in Massachusetts and New Hampshire and it's, it's a more common thing outside of Maine, as, as you might guess.
Okay, thanks.
It's any, it's any red flag. It's only a red flag for a lender when there's a shared easement and there's no maintenance agreement.
Got it. Thank you.
Any comments, questions, Roger?
Well, I just think we should postpone it till the fifth.
How about you, Tom? Comments, questions?
Well, you, on the last plan, you went, you went out of your way trying to avoid having headlights coming right into the neighbors across the street. It looks like some of these are going to be going back to, to doing that. Have you can?
No, we, we, we try. Yeah. So I, as best I could, I tried to locate the driveways where that wouldn't be happening. We kept the same entrance on one of them so that it was, so that the road entrance was as a, as a driveway. And then the other ones, I lined up with the aerial and tried to get them so they're not direct flashing. Which, Tom, one of the things that you also have to think of is that now there's not seven houses using one road. It's two, so you get less.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, in one of the, one of the driveways, I presume still comes out right there across from Legro Lane? Actually, that, that was just a bad spot for that driveway for our property. So I shifted that down quite a ways. Okay. It's not, it's not skewed on it. It's, it's, it's actually equidistant between Legros and another driveway on that same side. Okay.
Any thoughts, Jens?
None.
Okay. So Jason, we, we will see you on the fifth of January.
Yep. And I'll, I'll, I'll turn that stuff around so that, uh, might, they might kill two birds with one stone anyway.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Next item. Citizen request to delete the one thousand foot setback requirement of a medical marijuana caregiver facility from a church and daycare facility. The applicant is Naiato Inoue of the Solar Center, twenty-five Limerick Road, tax map thirty-five lot thirteen in the DB one and DB two districts. And we did receive a letter late this afternoon that I'm not going to read into the record or accept at this point because of the lateness in which it was delivered. We haven't had time to review it and read it and cogitate on it. But we are being asked. And Mr. Inoue, is it, am I saying that correctly, sir?
Uh, in no way, but Melto will be fine. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for hearing me. Uh, in no way, but Naoto will be fine. Good evening, everybody, thank you for hearing me.
You know, though.
I, I would like to read the letter into the record if I can.
No, sir.
Okay.
This, this late of an application, we, we need to get away from that, because we've had to come back and bite us on more than one occasion. Uh. This, this would require an amendment to the land use ordinance. And I think the question for the board is more along the lines of how do we feel about shifting that down? If I understand Naido correctly, you're talking about going from a thousand foot setback down to about three hundred and fifteen feet.
Uh, I am suggesting that thousand feet will be eliminated completely for daycare centers. And the church.
So you're, you're saying that there would be no, uh, distance requirements at all?
Yeah, I, I elaborate considerably, uh, in my letter for my reasonings. But, um, basically what my letter asserts is the fact that. The thousand square, a thousand feet setback is based on either federal or other states. Uh, uh, basically antiquated, uh, distance that was arbitrarily picked. Uh, if you consider logically of, uh, what daycare means. For example, from, uh, my location in twenty-five Limerick Road to thirty-five Limerick Road. Where Joe Ent's Childcare Center is located, it is true that three hundred and twenty-five feet. As crow flies, uh, is the actual, the, uh, straight line distance, however. Um, there is a considerable heavy dense brush, uh, along our boundary. Uh, that would make it even difficult for any adult to even traverse that. So actually, thousand feet plus will be the actual, uh, travel distance. For anybody reasonably trying to get to my Wabi Sabi, uh, greenhouse. Uh, I can't see how a five-year-old might be. Escaping from the supervision of the daycare, traversing that thousand feet plus. Lot, unlocking or breaking into a locked facility that is mandated by. Uh, caregivers, uh, rule, under the rules that it has to be, uh, locked. And breaking in and finding a live, limited life, uh, uh, limited to caregiver. Uh, program, uh, plants inside of it. And knowing how to harvest, dry and, and, uh, process the plants. All within be, time before a daycare facility, uh, caregivers recovers this child. As for churchgoer, I am sure that. They're good churchgoers, and they would never even think of breaking into a facility like mine or any other facility. I assume, we're not really, uh. You know, church, I'm sure the churches would not attract any kind of, uh, deviant people.
The, one of the issues that I would have with this is that the way it's being presented, it is personal for you only. There are other daycare centers in town. Uh, if we make this change, we open all of them up to the possibility. That there would be a medical care, uh, grows facility right next to where they're located.
Well, according to my, excuse me, uh, according to my understanding of, uh, Arondo ordinance, which. Uh, ex- exempts the, uh, medical marijuana caregiver program. Or, and only allowed in, in the DB two's district. I don't think that there are that many other, uh, potential sites within DB two. That will, uh, be affected by it. I think I am one of the, probably the only one that it's really affected.
So the. The greenhouse is located in DB two, is that correct, Ted?
Correct.
And what, what section is in the DB one?
Uh, the Solar Center, if you recall the site you've been to before, Solar Center section is in the, uh, DB one. And the greenhouses in the DB two district.
Okay. Well, it's a, it's up to the board as to whether or not they want to. Or entertain the idea of changing the land use ordinance. Uh, if so, we will move forward and put it on the agenda, uh, for some point, starting in January. To have this discussion.
Um, this is Emily Ingris, can I add something to the discussion?
Please.
Um, so I'm a parent of young children, and, um, I don't see any issue with changing the ordinance whatsoever. Um, I agree with Naoto's assessment that it'd be incredibly difficult for a child to find their way into a facility like this. Um, I also think that as the laws. And perceptions around marijuana change, we need to change our policies. And regulations to reflect that and to de-stigmatize something that is used as a medical treatment. I mean, in my view, it'd be really no different than having a pharmacy or a doctor's office next door to my child's daycare. Which should not be an issue at all, um, so I'd just like to add that as a comment.
Thank you.
I also like to stipulate that, uh, at my facility, Wabi Sabi Greenhouse. It is purely to grow the plant itself. We will not be, uh, processing or selling or, uh, you know, manufacturing. Uh, products from the plants. It will be, uh, 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 sold to the ca- others caregivers who has, uh, other locations. And, uh, uh, for, uh, you know, legal licensing process to do such activity. There won't be any signs or, uh, actual retail operations at all, it's a very private. Uh, caregiver operation.
Excuse me, Na- Naoto, maybe I'm, I'm mistaken, but I, it's my understanding, you only can sell seventy-five percent of your crop. To another caregiver or to a distribution center. If you're a caregiver, you also have to have some patients that you're personally providing. Is, is, is that not what part of your business plan?
Uh, actually, uh, uh, the off-taker, for, uh, I won't be personally growing. But, uh, there'll be a business partner that will be ha- ha- have a thirty plant. Uh, caregiver license, and he'll, he'll will be strictly growing his, uh, plants. And he has a, um, uh, business called Canudex in Bitterford Industrial Park. Where he has license to be able to process the plants and extract the oil. Uh, and in a, uh, laboratory conditions. And to provide, um, clean, uh, comp- pharmaceutical grade compounded. Uh, low dosage, uh, medical, uh, capsules to his cancer patients.
But, but the question still remains.
Go ahead.
The, the question still remains, are you going to be having the requisite twenty-five percent of this crop for your own? Uh, patients, for the, for medical marijuana patients that are coming to the facility to pick it up? The law says.
No, no.
You can only sell twenty-five percent, or seventy-five percent, I'm sorry.
Canut, Canudex has Mac, uh, has, uh, the license, caregiver's license. Up to, to grow up to thirty plants. Uh, is Mac, are you on? Can you elaborate on that?
Yes.
Mac, could you say his name?
Hi, thank you for hearing us tonight, I appreciate it. My name is Kevin McElum, for the record.
Okay.
Um. But the issue here is that we make medicine, we're not selling anything to smoke. We extract the oils from the plant up in Bitterford. And, um, I do sell twenty-five percent of that, I sell seventy-five percent of it to other caregivers who have patients. And we service a marketplace that really has not been addressed. We sell, um, our dosages are lower than anything out there on the adult use side. And, and again, the adult use side is not medical, it's totally different, and we are not in the adult use space. And we're not planning on being in the adult use space. Um, I've been making oils from the cannabis plant for seven years, I've seen seventeen cancer patients go from stage four cancer. To no cancer, so this is not like we're not, uh, some stoners out there trying to get people high on the street corner. That's like the war on drugs attitude, and that's over. Um, thank you, Emily, for your comments. Uh, about time that we see what the reality of the situation is. I mean, I have a man that recently started taking a, a low dose, uh. Combination of THC and CBD, and, uh, his wife has sent me multiple texts saying. You have transformed our life, you know, this is what's happening, this is a ground swell, it's all across the nation, across the whole world. And we need the local, the local towns, all of you, you're in charge of this, this is your. You can affect the lives of so many patients by just allowing medical to proceed, and we. You can't prohibit a, a medical garden at the local level, but you can, uh, properly regulate it. And that's what Naoto is saying, is let's properly regulate this. And like he said, we're going to take the harvest from Wabi Sabi, and it's going right up to the industrial park up in Bitterford. There's not going to be any advertisement, it's very low-key, we, we're not that, you know, I, I, um. I've been working with patients for seven years, my wife was my first patient, and she passed away from cancer. And I have been working with cancer patients ever since, so I'm asking for your help. I asked Naoto for his help, and I'll ask you, all of you, for your help. And we're not trying to, you know, like he said, we're not putting any s- signs for sale, we're not. You know, looking to sell anything in Arundel, and the whole harvest will go to Bitterford. And I do, uh, have curbside pickup up at the industrial park for some patients, and then. Like I mentioned to you, we manufacture capsules that nobody else is manufacturing currently. And, um, we blend hemp and cannabis, there, there's a, it, it's a, there's ground swell happening in the nation. And Arundel can be a part of that, you know, we're, we're looking at trying to work with multiple towns, because there's a lot of caregivers. Who are out there that are, um, trying to, um, maintain businesses while the adult use, uh, takes off. There's a, a ton of our caregivers in the caregiver community that are a little nervous about that, because of this kind of a. You know, towns are concerned, they think, well, medical, that was the precursor to adults, so it's got to be adult, it's not. I walked into a couple of shops to market my low-dose capsules, and they looked at me like. The highest dose that I sell is the lowest dose that they currently have on the, on the, on their shelves, you know. We sell low-dose products, so that people, um, for example, you know, um. I work with some healthcare professionals, they're, they're working, they can't be stoned all day, so we're looking at. Imagine every patient has a threshold under which you don't get hot, you don't get the effect of THC. Above that, you will get the effect, so we manufacture the doses, and everybody's threshold is a little different, so people use different levels. Um, and people are using these during the day for anxiety, for back pain, all different things. Um, inflammation, irritable bowel syndrome, Parkinson's, epilepsy, I specialize in cancer protocols.
Mac, Mac, I, I, I'm going to interrupt you.
Yeah, sure, they, I could go on for a long time, so thank you.
That's wonderful that all of this, that you're doing all of this stuff, and, and it, it sounds like you've got a good business model. Our discussion revolves around whether or not we want to do away with the thousand-foot setback. It has nothing to do with adult marijuana use or any, anything other than. The town itself had a survey done four years ago, and sixty-seven percent of the respondents. The respondents were a little over forty-five percent of the population. Sixty-seven percent of those people said, we don't want anything other than medical marijuana.
That's all we're doing.
And the, the discussion that we're having now is whether or not we want to get rid of the thousand-foot setback. If we go down this road, you need to be aware of the fact that we are talking about six or seven months before it gets to a. Uh, to town meeting, to have a vote taken.
Yeah, we, we fully realize that it has to be, uh, passed by the town, by town vote. But, uh, based on Todd's guidance, we thought that we should get this process started. So that we can be on the, uh, uh, town meeting agenda. To whether if they, uh, people of Arundel would be willing to eliminate thousand-foot setback requirement for DB two. Uh, and I understand that, uh, uh, am I correct that DB two is the only section that allows medical marijuana? A caregiver facility to be.
Yes, sir.
So, so, you know, as, as, as already, uh, written into Arondo ordinance. It is quite limited, I just happen to be in DB two, I just happen to be within. Less than thousand feet, but if I had been seven hundred feet further away towards Arundel Market. I would be allowed to be, uh, legally, uh, listed to Mac to grow his caregiver, uh, plants. So, I, I, I do agree with you, Richard, that it, it seems like. Uh, I am asking for some, uh, ordinance change for one particular property. But it turns out that one particular, this particular property actually does have a very unique, uh, situation. That kind of fits into, uh, catch twenty-two situation, I, in my opinion. And I, I gotta say, what, I gotta follow up on Mac's assertion about the thousand feet. Uh, uh, you know, I, I concur with the fact that the thousand feet is a very arbitrary number. It, it, it's strictly based on the, uh, federal, uh, uh, federal, uh.
It's based on federal law.
Federal law, yet forty-four states has already turned to some sort of a, either. Uh, uh, legal or medical marijuana, um, uh, laws. Which in, in, in fact, what, what it is, what forty-four states are saying. Is that we no longer accept federal status labeling of this plant. As with any other plants that are, uh, uh, used as a base biomass. To make all kinds of pharmaceutical drugs, so, it, you know. I, it does feel like it's a very targeted twenty-five limit road ask. But I, in, in my intent is actually to bring out this issue to, to, at the localized. Of, can we talk about this, that to change the attitude of this particular plant? That has been erroneously labeled for fifty years. And hundreds of thousands of people have been incarcerated because of this, and we have a chance.
Going to go down that road, I don't want to go down that road, because we can have that discussion about almost anything. We can start talking about how Oregon is legalizing cocaine, doesn't make it right, doesn't make it wrong, just because one state does it. I'm a big fan of, I don't care what anybody else does, what do we do in Arundel? Okay, so. Let's have the discussion amongst the board, do you want to look at changing this section of the ordinance? And if so, we will move it, we will post it on the agenda and move forward with it.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, I think, can I just say one thing that, you know, we picked the thousand at the federal level. There's different states that do different numbers, we have many states that have two hundred and fifty feet as the limit, like. We, it's an arbitrary number, and we're trying to make medicine for people. And we're trying to make medicine for people. We don't need towns standing in the way of helping people with their.
I'm not, I'm not willing to listen to the discussion of whether we're standing in the way. We are doing what we think is best for the citizens of the town of Arundel.
Okay. Yeah.
Susan. I think it merits further discussion by the board.
Yes, I think you should. Yep.
I agree with Roger. I think it's, you know, it's a proposal that's come forth by a citizen and, and we should give it due consideration.
I, I agree. It's something that we, we need to, as a board, we need to look at it and say, do we want to change it? Do we want to leave it the way it is?
Well, so I think we might want to, you know, it may be overly broad and, and maybe it needs more refinement. And I, I agree that I believe it, it warrants further discussion, really.
Thoughts?
Yeah, no, I, I agree. We should discuss it at some point.
Okay.
I do too.
Thank you very much for listening to me.
Yeah, hang on just a sec. Got to hear from Jens.
I'm not really very excited about the issue one way or the other. The majority, really, to be frank about it.
It's understandable.
Majority of the, of the board that you have polled already has expressed a feeling about it that looks like there's a, the tide is running a certain direction. So there be it.
Yeah. So we, we, I will direct the town planner to put this on the agenda. And we will start working on, on having, we have some workshops coming up. We have some other stuff and this will be one of the things that we end up looking at and making a discussion about.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Ask Alta, is, how's that going to affect his mushrooms?
Well, shiitake mushroom attempt for the last five years was a miserable failure simply because indoor grow, we were successful in growing mushrooms all throughout the winter without any external full self-fuel energy. But, you know, eight dollars a pound, it's not really sustain, financially success.
I didn't know, I didn't know if these plants would help your growth of the mushrooms.
I'm sorry, Marty.
Marty, different environment. Auto requirements too.
Just, just so that, you know, and I, I realized that this is outside of the scope of 1,000 feet, but what I am trying to do with Wabi Sabi greenhouse is the high performance envelope greenhouse that can be applied for other growing operation besides cannabis. But right now, when I met Mac and the need that he had close to Biddeford, I thought that it was a perfect, perfect fit. I didn't realize that Joanne's childcare center was there when I offered this potential opportunity. But this high performance greenhouse model is something that I'm very passionate about to be able to spread it because please, I have, my submission from this afternoon will explain the basis of my passion and, and, and energy that I will be spending for next couple of years trying to make this successful. There is a huge discrepancy in an energy load in a cannabis industry. So thank you for your attention and allowing me to propose this.
Naoto, one question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you on the, the list to get notification of planning board items and agenda?
No, I don't think.
Okay. You might want to contact Tad. Yeah, you have to go out onto the website and sign up for it. But
Okay.
You'll, that, you'll, that way you will get notification every time we have a meeting and you'll know when it comes up.
Well, I'll notify him anyways.
Okay.
Because the app can all notify him anyway. So.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak.
All right. Have a good day.
You too.
The next item on the agenda. Amendments to timber harvesting, including definitions and permitting.
Well, you guys asked me to look at the definition and I gave you all the definitions stuff there. On this, this issue and you could see there's some some distinct differences between the town of Arundel's timber harvesting definition and that of the state. And actually the town of Arundel deals with tree cutting and the state deals with timber harvesting and they do overlap at times, but they're not quite the same thing.
I, I kind of like the simplicity of the state definition. Timber harvesting means the cutting or removal of timber for the primary purpose of selling or processing products. It's a commercial activity. And that's be it, be it to sell firewood or be it to, to, to harvest lumber so that somebody can build a house or make a table. You know, it's, it's a commercial activity, which I think is a really good indicator from a timber harvesting point of view. It's, it's really kind of difficult to define what it, what it is. I mean, they, they give you ancillary areas talking about clear cutting timber and what that means. There, there's a bunch of other stuff, but I think, I think the definition itself is much more functional than what, what we have for a definition of timber harvesting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Chip Bassett.
Ah, okay. I was wondering who ECB was.
Oh, yes.
Thanks.
No. It, it is, it is I. I'm very glad to hear that you like the state definition. I, I think that the problems that brought this subject up have nothing to do with timber harvesting. And I think the state definition is a good one. It is removing wood from woodlands for the commercial purposes. The problems that I, I did speak with the town planner some about this, but the problems that have come up really had to do with development cuts. Cuts relating to development and buffers and the like, and nothing to do with harvesting wood for, whether it's pulp or firewood or you know, two by forests at Lowe's or, or, or whatever. And so I, I, I think it's very important to, to, to get back on track with the, the state definition and then deal with the issues that have come up that the planning board is concerned about separate from commercial timber harvesting. I'd also like to point out that there really are only, to my knowledge, somewhere in the neighborhood of five to seven individuals or families in Arundel that own sufficient land for a commercial timber cut. I happen to be the largest of those landowners. And I, I don't want to get caught up in regulations that are intended to deal with problems at cluster housing developments. So that, that's, that's one thing. I was wondering if it would be possible for me to, to make a comment now. I, I can wait till later. But on the existing, the existing provisions of the land use ordinance and when a permit can be issued, a conditional use permit can be issued for more than 40% of the basal area. Is, is now an appropriate time to make that comment?
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Okay. And 40, I'm sorry, 9.3.40 timber harvesting. Item number three. Timber harvesting operations exceeding the 40% limitation may be permitted as a conditional use by the planning board upon submission of a forest management plan signed by a licensed marine professional forester. I'm okay with everything up to this point. Characterizing the necessity of the exception in conformance with good forest management practices. The, the word I have a problem with is necessity. I think it's perfectly reasonable for a forester to look at one piece of property and say, no, good, good forest management for this stand of trees is 40% and no more. There could easily be another situation where the property hasn't been cut for 20 or 30 years. There are a lot of deadfalls. You, you, you want to do weeding to, to get cash crops as opposed to swamp maple where it, it's not necessary to take more than 40%. But it is better forest management if you're managing the, the land long-term for timber growth. So I, I don't know what you guys think about that, but I, I have an issue with the word necessity there.
I don't have my ordinance in front of me.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Now, a lot of times, a lot of these different properties or anything else were under tree growth. Does this fall underneath that category or is that separate if it wasn't in tree growth?
This is separate.
Marty, it, it has nothing to do with tree growth. I, my property is part tree growth and part not tree growth. But it, it, it all is regulated the same way.
Oh, my only question was because of necessity, thinking of necessity under tree growth.
Well, the necessity is usually, is, is, is determined by the forester's plan. That, and from that standpoint, Marty, I mean, you, you know, when you have tree growth, you, you're expected to cut at a certain, certain time. You have a plan for cutting at various times to achieve a goal of improving the forest and improving it for, for better timber production. And unless you have wildlife concerns or some other object besides commercial harvesting, you're required, I mean, you should take a certain amount of cutting every year if you're in tree growth. Yeah. But that's not a necessity. That's something that's really dictated by the plan that you've agreed to with the forester.
I think what Chip is partially objecting to is that the connotation of necessity is almost as if it has to be done as opposed to a recommended maintenance or for the betterment of the forest, which, or the, you know, the woodlands. So necessity implies that it has to be done. And the, for the maintenance and the betterment of the woodlands is, and I'm trying to think of a word that encompasses both of those, isn't quite as what stark in terms of what has to be shown or proven to have a necessity, a situation where a necessity is in place or considered sort of an accurate description of what needs to happen. I'm just, I'm at a loss for words tonight, but there is a difference between betterment and for proper maintenance and the idea of there being a necessity. I think.
Let, let me throw out a, a, a term of art that might work instead of necessity that, that it be consistent with, with best management practices.
I like that. Because necessity is, is subjective also. And I guess best management practices is subjective, but if you have a licensed forester, presumably they're going to make suggestions that are hopefully going to be for the, to the advantage of the woodland, I, I would assume.
To the chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I tend to see necessity in this context as almost begrudgingly. It's almost something where it's not desire, it almost implies it's not desirable to cut. But if you really have to, I guess you should. It, it, it doesn't, it, it's almost a negative approach to timber harvesting instead of a positive approach towards it. So I understand why it's somewhat offensive to somebody who really does timber harvesting.
To the chair.
Yes. Yeah, Jens.
This is a subject that's more interesting to me than the last one. My, I guess my, my comment would be, I, I'm not sure where we are looking in either the existing language or the proposed language. As to the term necessity, what's appealing to me is as some, some of you have observed the simplicity of the state definition. I like the leanness of it and perhaps if there are going to be some exceptions or qualifications to it, those two would be lean and efficient. I like that part of our existing definition that exempts out construction or creation of roads and the clearing of land for approved construction. I think that we could take the nice lean definition that the state is used and to extract out from our own definition, those exceptions and leave it at that.
Okay. So I, I'm looking at the chart that, that Tad gave us. And it talks about the definition of timber harvesting. From, from the state's point of view, it's the primary purpose to sell or process forest products. Which I, I find that to be great because it just, it's really straightforward because we are talking about a commercial activity. You know, if you're, if you're Marty's friend Harvey homeowner and you want to cut down trees in your backyard, you've got five acres of land and you want to cut down trees for an acre's worth of land to, to give yourself a bigger backyard for your family gatherings, I don't care. I, I don't think that's anything that we need to necessarily deal with. Now, if you want to cut all of that, all of those trees down and sell them for firewood, you want to sell them. That's a commercial activity.
I agree.
So I, you know, I, I think it has to be looked at. I think the exemption that, that we need to have is in the ordinance in that we don't want to, you can, making a road out there.
Yeah, we don't want to include incidental benefits of, of some cutting for another primary purpose. I think that is an invitation to getting bogged down.
Yep.
I, I understand your, your, I'm sorry, this is Chip again. I understand your point about that. However, I, I, the, the, Tad brought something to my attention that, that is in the current land use ordinance prohibiting, basically prohibiting any roads of any kind for the purpose of timber harvesting. I have to make a road of sorts. Now, it's, it's not a subdivision road. But for example, when I cross, I, I did a harvest last year up in Alfred and it had to cross a drainage ditch. And the town of Alfred perfectly reasonably required me to put a culvert and And, and appropriate gravel over the top of it to get on the, the property. And there was not one, but two landings out there. They were connected by. A path through the woods over which motor vehicles traveled. Which I think is a road by anybody's definition, isn't it?
It sounds like it.
You, you, you bottom line, you can't get the trees out of the forest without a woods road.
That sounds like picking an area of chip.
Yep.
Right? I mean, if you're, if you're, if you're creating the road or removing the trees. In order to get in to do timber harvesting, then I suppose the creation of that road and the timber harvested for that purpose. Is timber harvesting.
And, and, and if you look, i- if you look at. If you look at, at what Tad wrote, you will see that, that. Road building for the strictly for the purpose of timber harvesting is considered part of timber harvesting by the state of Maine.
Correct, by the state it is, but under our ordinance it is not.
And, and that's, that's a problem. Well, I, I, I do want, and let, let me immediately add. I completely understand the concern about somebody abusing this. And, and doing a. Forest management operation. That, you know, eighteen months later, you've got a subdivision application using said log road as the access road. I don't have a suggestion as to how you address that. But I, I, I think you do need to address that. I would also.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I also wanted to point out that, that before I can do any timber harvesting operation, I have to have my forester. Thought submit a plan to the state. And get it approved by a, by the state forestry commission. And I, I have a numbered permit for my, for my harvesting operation.
Yeah, does that give you a time to do it?
Honestly, I don't know, Marty, I'm sorry.
I mean, I, I, what I'm saying is like, not months, but I mean. Do that, the, the plan of, well, over the next year or so.
Don't need a forester.
You have two years and you don't need a forester. Did you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
So you have two years.
Well, from, from my perspective. I think I, I like this state definition much better than anything else. We could look at it and say, okay, the road building is considered to be part of timber harvesting. A forest management plan is required. Whether we require something for forest regeneration or not. I don't know. That, that's one of, that's one of those things that I just, I'm just not sure about. The state does require it. And I think they, my opinion would be that they largely require it because they want to make sure that you're grow, you're replanting the crop of trees to, to continue to grow. So that there's stuff in the future when you want to cut it down. I could be wrong.
Yeah, they're dealing with much, the, the scale is entirely different.
Right. You know, and to Chip's point, if, if somebody comes in. And. They want to. Do timber harvesting and cut down. I don't know, twenty acres of land, say, they want to clear cut twenty acres of land. And they're going to sell off all of the timber and they're going to put a road in there. And then later on, they're going to come through and they're going to say, well, now that we've got it all cleared and we don't know what to do with it, we'll put in a subdivision. We as a planning board have the authority and the ability to say the road needs to be brought up to standards. You're going to be putting housing in there and you have to buffer. The houses, that's part of the requirement. So we can simply say, okay, fine. You can, you can do that, but you're going to have to go through and you're going to have to buffer everything. The only, the biggest problem I have is what Linda said. You don't need to have a forestry plan if this is for more than, for two years. I, I think if you're going to be cutting. Commercial harvesting in the town of Arundel, you need a forest management plan. And I don't care.
Rich, you have to have one.
Not according to what I just heard from Linda Zook. She said it was, there was a two, you could cut for two years without having the, a forester's plan. I, unless I misunderstood what she was saying.
No, 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 the permit is good for two years.
Okay, see, I did.
It's good for two years.
Okay, I'm, thank you, I'm glad you explained it.
Okay, sorry.
And I, I have, I think you should have to have a forage man- management plan. It, if it's commercial harvesting. But I don't, you know, if you, if, if you go through and you harvest all of those trees and then you decide you want to do something else with your land, go ahead and do it. You're still going to have to meet all of the, the requirements that this planning board has for whatever it is that you decide you're going to want to do.
And, and a, a, for example, i- if I were to. Do a timber harvest and then. A year later, I wanted to do a cluster housing on part of the property and I had cut down. All the vegetation that could have served as a required buffer. Well, it's my problem to replace that buffer.
That's exactly correct. That would be my position. Good luck replacing the buffer. It's going to get expensive.
Fast.
Probably more expensive than all the money that you've got selling all those trees. But that's.
De- factually, absolutely, definitely, positively more expensive and. Not worth it.
But at any rate, from, from the perspective of timber harvesting. Right now, it's required regardless of what the reason is. You know, you're allowed, you can create lawn, you can create. Pasture land if you want. But if you, if you harvest more than forty percent, you need to get a permit from the town or from the planning board actually and. It's, it's a very nebulous, how do you define the forty percent? I think it would be much easier just to say, from a personal point of view. We're not going to touch it. If you're doing this from, for commercial uses. Then, then we require a forest management plan. And we require you to come before us to get the permit to do so.
Rich?
Yes, sir.
Kind of off the, the subject, but with the, the study that's going to be coming up along the Kenny Mount River. And how we have so much overgrow of, of, how does that? Or does it fall into any conception of what we're speaking of?
I don't know, Marty. I don't know what they're going to come back at us with.
And if we do make any changes, do we have to submit this to the state for their approval of terminology?
I don't think so. Because we're not talking about doing it for shoreline zoning or for. Stream protection districts, we're, we're talking about the definition of timber harvesting and what that would have implied. That you're not allowed to do that in the stream protection district or the shoreline overlay.
Right, thank you.
So at any rate. Any, any other thoughts on this?
So I have one question. So somewhere in the ordinances, it talks about forty percent.
Yes.
And when you exceed that amount, you have to come to the planning board to get a permit.
Correct.
But the thing is, and you and I have talked about this offline, nobody's really keeping track of it. And, you know, Jim doesn't want to keep track of it, he doesn't have a start and an end date, he doesn't know. What was there before and has to sort of reinvent the wheel. So is it? Doesn't have value to have that forty percent in if no one is really keeping track of it or even enforcing it? I mean, it's just, poor Jim Nagle, he, if he has any more stuff that he's supposed to keep. Track of, but there's no political will to have him go out and actually keep track of it. I mean, what's the purpose of having some of this stuff in the ordinance in the first place?
That, that's a whole other discussion that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I think we need to clean this stuff, figure out what we want to enforce, what we want to police and what we don't. But otherwise, we've got all this stuff in there, but it, it's meaningless because nobody. Is enforcing it or keeping track of it, and I'm not saying they should or they shouldn't. But, you know, people go into it with the idea of that, okay, there's a cap on this and there are limits to that, but the truth is. The sheriff in town doesn't have a gun and actually doesn't even, you know. Is, doesn't even want to keep track of it and the selectmen really don't want him to keep track of it. The town manager really doesn't want him to cause any trouble and so. It's on the books, but nothing happens. If that's the way it's going to be, it's okay.
To the chair?
Yes.
I think we're putting too many words in the Jim Nagels mouth here. We should make some assumptions. This change that started this whole thing was something that he proposed. He wanted to have that statement that essentially he wanted this development permit, which he has, which is like a ten dollar permit. Basically as a way of keeping track of that. So being able, because he's, he's got the responsibility, as, as Susan says, he's got the responsibility. Of keeping track of what happens over ten years. You know, it's not forty percent at one time, it's forty percent basal area over a ten year period. You know, that's, and there's, and he's basically, all he asked for was, hey, put it in the ordinance that you can get a permit to, to do this less than forty percent. That way you register, somebody comes in, they want to cut commercially. We assume commercially, right now it's cut, period. And then. I have a record of when, how much they cut. And so when they come back and cut again, I can have a record of that and I know exactly when the planning board, or I have a general idea when the planning board should be involved.
Well, so, and let me just call, you know, clarify that I wasn't being critical of Jim Nagle by any means. I mean, he really has my sympathy because he's between a rock and a hard place. I mean, it's just, I feel, I feel for him, really.
But Susan, your point goes to what I was saying, if we take the individual homeowner. Who wants to cut down some trees on his property. And remove him from the picture completely and simply look at the commercial timber harvesting aspect. And require, I don't care if you're going to cut down three trees, if it's for com- commercial purposes, you need a management plan. That's, that's the way I would look at it, I don't, and I don't, the state doesn't seem to differentiate and say, well, you know, if, if you're only cutting an acre, you don't need a plan. They say if you're doing timber harvesting for commercial purposes, you need a forest management plan. And I would tend to go along with that. Make it nice and simple and say, here, this is the requirement. And if you're doing it personally and it's not for commercial sale. Then go right ahead and cut the trees down and expand your lawn or make a pasture or do whatever it is that you're interested in doing because it's not commercial activity.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that makes sense and the closer we can stay to the state of Maine. And what their requirements are, the better, I think, the easier and the better it is for us, for the most part.
Mr. Karen, may I make a suggestion?
You can try.
Okay, but I, I can make a suggestion, you don't have to take it. I, I'm merely asking to make the suggestion.
Yes.
What, 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 what if the town ordinance required a, a filing of some sort? Anytime the state requires a permit. So the town gets a copy of the permit, they get a copy of whatever is filed with the state. And you're not duplicating things, you're not asking for something different from what the state is. But you, you get a copy of the state permit and whatever the forester is submitting. To the state to get that permit for a commercial timber harvest.
That's not a bad idea. Essentially, what, what we do with any developer, they have. DEP regulations that they get that and they present it to us and they're good.
But that, that works if you know that you're, they're going to be, because they've come to us for, for whatever reason. And we've said, okay, you, you've got to go to DEP because you're going to fill wetlands or you want to do a road crossing or whatever. But that process has started with us and then continued on. My understanding from, from Chip is that it would start with the state and they would bring it to us, that's assuming that they would actually come. Which is why I would rather see them come to us and ha- have the same requirements.
Do both at once, they have to get the, the state permit and make sure the town.
Copy.
Has, before they start to cut.
Right, I think that's what Chip was saying, isn't it, Chip?
Yes.
Okay. That we get the paperwork, a copy of the paperwork at the same time it's being, you know, once it's filed with the state.
Let me ask you, what are you going to do with that paperwork, what are we doing with the paperwork?
I have no idea. Your empty file, file cabinets.
Tom Pato will take care of it.
I don't have enough room in my file cabinets. Literally. I, you know, what?
I agree with you.
Question I would ask this board is what are you trying to accomplish? What, what are we trying to?
How, what tool can you give Jim Nagle so he, he has some idea of what's going on?
But let me ask you.
And wouldn't that sort of solve what his problem is?
What is the board trying to accomplish with timber harvesting regulation?
So we can go out and count that, count the tree stumps.
No, but what is the object, what is your land use object in, in regulating timber harvesting? What are you trying?
Go out and count the tree stumps.
But why?
In all seriousness.
Okay, I'm going to say this.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Hang on. Let's not go talking over each other. I do that enough for all of us.
Okay.
Dad, you were saying?
I, I've been saying all along, what is, what is the board's objective in regular timber harvesting? What are you trying to achieve?
That's a, that's a valid question, if you look at the, at, at the end of the memo that went out. There is a list of eleven different questions that address. What's our goal, what's our objective? You know, do we want to regulate only commercial timber harvesting as defined by the state of Maine?
My perspective would be you'd want to regulate a large scale tree harvest. Primarily for. You know, natural resources conservation type of, of standpoint. Good erosion controls, you know. So that you don't have a significant damage to the land, long-term damage to the land and the receiving waters. That, you know, a. I guess a. A timber harvest, a poorly managed timber harvest could. Could cause.
That's good.
The, 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 that's right, Jamie, it's, it is the effect on the land itself, forget about the trees, but it, I think it's also coupled with. The idea of eliminating a, in, an irresponsible. Removal or elimination of trees. I recognize the problem with that is, I mean, it's like art, I know it when I see it or.
I recognize the problem with that is, I mean, it's like art, I know it when I see it, or if I get to the-
Know what I like. I don't know much about art, but I know what I like.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the point I'm getting to, all right? I mean, we all, we all can agree, we don't want irresponsible removal of, of a precious resource like a tree stand, but that, I think that, that objective and that, which Jamie well articulated is, is the answer to Ted's question.
And I would agree with that. I thought you did that quite well, Jamie. It's a very good, that, good explanation of what we would be attempting to accomplish.
Let's, I mean, other people may have other things they're looking to accomplish, but, I mean, from my perspective with timber harvesting, I think that's the, that's what we're, we're looking at.
Okay, and how will we define a significant or large tree cut?
I would say the forty percent is right there.
So we're back to forty percent?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're all going to, we're going to pick a number out of a hat.
Yep.
I mean, forty percent on a, on a two acre lot is not significant. Thirty percent on a two hundred acre lot is.
Yep, and-
Yeah, but isn't-
But the standard, it depends if the stands thick, it does, you know, remember, it's based on, on the trees and the size of the trees. I mean, it's based on basal area. It's not based on the air. We, we assume basal area is the area of cut. It's not.
Well, my, my not being smart enough-
Four feet of tr- or square feet of trees that we're taking out of there in terms of its stumpage.
My, my not being smart enough to be able to calculate all of that and to understand or the impact it would have, would lead me to think that, that the solution would be to require everybody to get a timber harvest plan and have a forest management plan come in there.
I thought we were talking about other than timber harvesting right now, isn't that what-
Yeah, I know. You know.
Richard, that's a, that's just not feasible.
I didn't say it was. I said it's my, I don't understand enough of that stuff to, to, you know, I recognize my own limitations on that. There's a ton of stuff that I don't understand. I'm going to have to trust a professional to tell me. And it, the only professional I know that would qualify from something in those terms would be a forest manager. Now, there may be somebody else out there that's capable of doing it. I don't know. I don't, and I'm not sure that the rest of the board would, would even go along with the idea. I just, I don't know. This is one of those things that I don't know what it is. I don't know until somebody tells me.
I guess-
Rich, can I, can I come back to a simple threshold? Which is i- i- if the state, if someone is undertaking a cut, which requires a state permit, then the town requires a permit.
Chip, refresh me on what that threshold would be from the state?
Uh, to be honest with you, I don't know exactly what that threshold is. Um, but i- i- it's, it's less than forty percent. I can tell you that because the cut I did last year was less than forty percent, considerably less.
Eekridge based? Do you remember?
It may have been.
It would appear to me that they're talking about five acres, something that's more than five acres in size. You know, they, they talk about clear cutting, uh, means any timber harvesting on a forested site greater than five acres in size that results in a residual base area of trees over four and a half inches in diameter, measured at such and such a point. Oh.
Yeah, but that's talking about clear cutting in large, in, in large tracks. That's clear cutting, cut to forty-one.
Right. Uh, it, it definitely, five acres definitely wouldn't apply here in Arundel.
And besides, here's the other question. If you say, well, we can, we can clear cut a piece of land in order to change the land cover from forest to, uh, to grassland, pasture, cropland, just, or I just want to regenerate naturally, and you can do that, then is it just the magic that I'm taking timber and selling it? That suddenly the word requires regulation? Because I'm getting a price for it. If I get a woodlot and I've got my own personal woodlot, like I, I have my woodlock in gray and I'm cutting that, I don't have to get regulated for doing my woodlot for personal use, but if I sell, if I sell a quart of wood out of there, now I've got a quart, now I've got a commercial operation, now I have to get a, a forest management plan. I'm, I'm just, I'm seeing a lot of difficulties here.
Well, and I, I mean, I agree. I don't know if somebody were to have a, a small side business, say, of, of cutting some trees for firewood, is that something where you've gotten limited land disturbance? Is that something that we, um, you know, when I say land disturbance, ground disturbance? You're, you're just, you're leaving the stumps in the ground. You're just taking the tree. Is that something that we would want to, um, get involved with? Even though somebody might-
Define small, small operation, Jamie. Do you know what I'm saying? Then you have to get into having to define what is, you know, a cottage?
Well, I'm saying stay-
And what is a professional?
I'm saying stay out of that, that type of, of regulation.
Yeah, I think we have to decide what we want to regulate and how we're going to keep track of it.
Exactly. And I think that, that leads to Ted's question from a few minutes ago. What-
I agree. I think it's, I totally agree. Timber harvesting is easy, but it's the other stuff.
Is, is this, another question I would ask the board. Is this a high priority item concerning all the other things we have to do?
No.
Not for me.
No.
No.
Cause I feel we're getting bogged down in something, but we have really big issues to deal with. I don't see that. I, maybe it's me, but I'm not sure. I see where timber harvesting. Yeah, we've got guys who are going out and clear cutting a piece of land that they're about to develop and so forth. And we have those problems. And yes, they're going to pay a price when they have to put back, you know, a, an entire buffer. Uh, but I, I, I think we have some bigger fish to fry, and I'm wondering if we're going to get bogged down in, in trying to deal with something. We're not even sure why we want to regulate it at this point. I know Jim's got an issue because, you know, he's given this score, this, this issue of, I've got to, uh, give out a permit, uh, and track cuts on a piece of land for ten years if it's, you know, determine whether or not it's got four, you know, forty percent BA on that. And when I, when I get to that air, get to that point, then I gotta kick it over to the planning board. And, and yeah, that, that's something that, it's an administrative thing that, that, you know, he basically came up with this idea. You get, you get this development permit for ten bucks for me. You know, just so I can do that tracking that I'm statutorily required to do. I think for the planning board standpoint, maybe we need to really focus on some bigger issues like we've been talking about tonight on the whole issue of what we're going to do with multifamily housing? Or are we going to do that? Are we going to do age restricted? And then we've got this huge barrier called the growth, you know, growth, residential growth ordinance that's going to prevent us from doing stuff that's written in our comp plan. And, you know, these are big issues. That, and, and they get worse as we get into more and more marginal land, which we're getting into now. And, and the, the intensity and the demand for housing that's occurring right now is driving us into, into these marginal land areas where some of our cluster development is not going to work, guys.
So maybe those forty permits that we were talking about earlier, and obviously I think we need to discuss it further, maybe those do not include multifamily and over fifty-five communities and only deal with single-family houses. So, and the other two or three ways to build housing are not a part of that account. So, you know, and you suggested that earlier, and maybe that's something we really need to consider.
It is something that we need to discuss and look at.
I agree.
But at the same time, we have to be aware of the fact that, uh, and I'm going to pick on the golf course because they're the only ones that, that I can think of. Way back about seven or eight years ago, they wanted to do fifty-five and over housing. And they wanted all of their permits at one time, a hundred and twenty-some odd permits. They want them all right now.
Yep.
And they didn't care about the land. They wanted us to override the land use ordinance and let them have what they wanted to have. And when we said no, they decided not to do their project. We need to-
Fiscally do it. I mean, from, from a development standpoint, you can't, you, 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 you can't have a multi-unit project in which you get two permits a year when you're doing it.
Right.
Doesn't work.
It is prob- it is problematic. So we need, but we need to be able to look at it and develop a separate standard for how many of those do we want to have at any one time going on? Do we want to issue a hundred and twenty permits to one guy? And somebody else is going to put up multifamily houses and he's going to want thirty or forty permits? Because he's going to build a large, uh, subdivision with a bunch of multifamily houses in it. A bunch of side-by-side condos.
And then if, if you, if we make an exception for them, how fair is that to the, the individual landowner who wants to build it and he's told, no, you, you have to wait till next year? So it-
That becomes the issue because we would have those permits completely outside. So we, we'd end up having multiple classes of permits. And that's a discussion that we're going to have to face.
Nothing. We have to figure all that out.
Yes, you do. Because frankly speaking, if you remember that the growth control ordinance is there specifically to prevent the town, the town taxpayer from getting overwhelmed with having to provide services for a growth spurt that they're not prepared fiscally or organizationally to, to take care of. And that's the basis and the lead, that's the constitutional, I should say, the, the law, the case law basis of which why you can have a growth control ordinance, which frankly is, is, is a bit of an anathema here in me. But the reason why you have it is so because the government is overwhelmed. Most, most likely, it, it really, what we're talking about is the schools aren't overwhelmed. We're suddenly, we need new schools, we need a lot more teachers, we need a whole new, whole new administration that costs a bundle that really puts a huge fiscal burden on the taxpayers. Um, that's why you meter out this growth. You might be, and, and so when we look at this ordinance and modify it, we have to remember that's the reason we have it. If the reason is to control stop growth, guess what? Doesn't work. Never will work. It's not a growth stoppage thing. It's not a growth impediment. It's a, it's a growth delay. It's kicking the can down the road. And in some cases, it's keeping you from getting the development that you've said you wanted to get. But the issue that you always have to look at is what, what are the kinds of developments that are coming in? Are they going to put too much pressure on the schools? Or are they not? Are they going to put too much pressure on services? Or trash or sewage? You know, it all depends. And so those are the issues that we have to deal with. And I'm, I'm thinking that maybe that's what we need to focus on more right now than timber harvesting.
I'm fine with that. And I would agree with that. I think that is something we need to look at. One of, one of the issues, I mean, if we look at, at just the forty houses in growth ordinance, then we're looking at, at the burden on the schools. But if we look at uh, doing fifty-five and old over restricted housing, we're going to have to figure out the impact on those, on the, on the fire department and the, and the ambulance service ten years down the road, because that's going to have a big impact.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Why don't we put this to a workshop? Because we're not getting anything done tonight and it's getting late.
That is a great idea. We, I am planning on a workshop on January twelfth.
Oh, yeah.
It's the week, it's the week after, uh, we have a meeting on the fifth and the following Tuesday, we're going to have a workshop. We got, at some point, we got to have these workshops because we got, we, we're falling behind and not getting anything accomplished.
And June's coming quickly.
Oh, yeah.
We do have a lot of stuff. Uh, oh.
Go, go ahead.
Let's hang on just, hang on just for a second, guys. We have five items that we, that we need to vote on. Uh, we've had the public hearings, so now we need to decide whether or not we want to pass these on to the selectmen for inclusion on the town warrant whenever they get around to it.
I make a motion, we send all five of them to the town selectmen.
Yeah.
I agree.
Our plate.
Roger made the motion, Jens seconded it. Anybody disagree with the motion?
No.
All right, Susan?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Jens?
Hi.
Roger?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
It is unanimous.
Marty too.
Oh, yeah, Marty.
Marty.
Marty, we got to get your, your picture fixed.
A black box here.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't know what, I don't know what button to push to make it work.
In, in the lower left-hand corner of your screen, do you see a, a little, did you see a microphone that says mute? Right next to it, there's a, there's a video camera?
So guys, I hate to do this, but I've got to make a business call to the West Coast. And, uh, so-
Okay.
While Marty's sorting this out, can we, I move that we adjourn?
I'll second that.
All right. We are, we are all done. And Marty, stay on. I'll see if we can't get you, uh, get your video working.
I don't see you. Have a nice Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas, everyone.
To all of you.
Take care, everybody.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
You want a Tuesday?
You got it.
Yeah. Yeah. Tuesday.
Okay, Marty, you still there?
I'm here.
Okay. You, you see, you see the, the, the microphone in the lower left-hand corner where it says mute?
Lower left corner, no. Yeah, well, yeah, I see mute, yeah.
And right next to it, there, this should be something that says video?
Yeah, uh, it says start video.
Yes, start video. There you are, Marty. I can see you. Oh, hit that start button again. There you go. That's what will give you video.
I don't see it on my pad.
You will, I don't know why you don't, but I can see you perfectly.
All right. Usually my, because usually it comes up with the picture on the top.
Yep.
All right. You can see me now?
I can see you fine.
Thank you.
You're quite well, Marty.
Happy holidays.
All right. Have a Merry Christmas.
You too.